But he's, I met him today. He's gonna come out on Thursday and fix it. Replace copper and put pecks.
Pecks better than copper.
So... But you know, we shouldn't complain. These houses are like, you know, again, built in 1840s and 50s. Although I don't think they put copper lines in back then. You know, this is the first time I've ever sat up here all by myself. It's like...
If you'd be kind of long term up there, you can do whatever you want to.
Yeah, I can just talk like with you guys. Nobody's sitting up here but me right now.
That's exactly right.
Traffic wasn't too terrible?
You might be out back if that's what you're looking for.
I told him if we do the minute.
Are you looking for somebody?
Oh, yeah, that's true. This should not happen tonight. Really, really important.
We've got one minute. If nobody's doing anything last weekend in April, you can come to the Alsatian Festival.
Oh, we gotta move around a little bit.
So anyway, what I was saying is, if you need something to do the last Saturday in April, you can go to the Alsatian Festival. It's like our fifth annual. Alsatian food, Alsatian wine, Alsatian beer, Alsatian dancing, Alsatian dancers. And there'll be ten Alsatians here. We shipped in ten Alsatians just for the festival.
Shipped them?
Shipped them in?
Alright.
No, there's gonna be visitors.
Did we import them or were they exported from?
Is our tile coming for Steinbach?
Yeah.
Is our tile coming for the Steinbach?
I need to ask.
You need to ask. You should ask before they get on the plane.
That's right.
I thought about that yesterday when I was looking at, Betty over the weekend was showing me some books and they all had water damage. And I'm like, uh, that's not good.
Yes.
They aren't historic, they aren't...
I happen to know somebody that can go and bug the mayor.
Oh, you think?
Guy's name's Menard.
Okay.
So we are actually not gonna have a quorum for about another ten or fifteen minutes.
Okay.
If I can have your attention really quickly, I just wanna let everybody know, we're having some challenges right now getting folks in, so we will not have a quorum for another ten to fifteen minutes. So if you'll just be patient, enjoy each other's company and we'll let you know as soon as we've got everybody.
Dave is running late.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know. I hadn't heard from him, so. I didn't see it. It's really bad on the radio.
Always. Coming this way, it always is. When I go over, I kind of hear it. It's always because of my kind of...
That's your nose. Eight, which isn't where... It's only put on the other page together. That one that's in presentation shouldn't be there. It's gonna be that down from eleven. And then until eleven A, up to there. He'll open on eleven and talk about it.
And then he's gonna move this way? Probably. No more.
That's what he told me about it.
So nobody's gotten you guys yet? They haven't gotten yet?
I wonder. Yes, you told us about it. That's kinda scary and fun. Tried to see all that. Has he got anybody yet? They were doing the ribbon cutting over next door at Elevate. And so she went out to do the picture, the ribbon cutting, and she's just like... While she was...
Someone's oughta maybe tell, don't tell us, tell the police office. Seriously. I mean, seriously. I mean, I, yes, if you think it's gonna happen. You realize that everybody in town now knows better because they've been listening to our conversations. But these are live. But no, I, but I would let you know.
I play soccer, man.
Lady in the dinner jacket.
Yeah. They were out there. House recall. Yeah. Bottom of the door. Okay. Are you wearing a knee to knee? Are you wearing a knee to knee?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. That's a lot, that's a lot. I'm not, my geography makes this, I know a lot of places. Where's Fulton? I don't know, I gotta look it up. They're on the same way.
Yeah, she did.
That's Friday, that's Friday?
And she told me the story. But how they got the concept?
Well, I don't even have to clean out. You go for a...
Not really, it's just...
Really intriguing.
I love the lights, right?
Oh, yeah, right here.
Yeah.
Yes, he might be reaching for the glass. It's all day, year and year and year and year.
It always just works really well, so sorry, it's so abrupt. We're just gonna wait for Deborah to get up here and start the recording and we'll start up.
Thank you all for your patience.
Yes, ma'am.
Is it on over there?
Do you have audio now? Okay. All right. We're ready to call this meeting to order at 5:50. Let's start with a roll call.
Sheena Martinez, District One.
Phil King, District Three.
David Merz.
Members, and we do have a quorum. If you would please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
First to the American flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And the Texas flag.
Honored by Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one, indivisible.
And we have Pastor Max from Discover Church to give the invocation.
Please bow your heads. Heavenly Father, we come before you, Lord God. We are so thankful for this beautiful day and this opportunity to come together. God help everyone here today. Guide decisions, plans, and initiatives. Please grant us wisdom and foresight to see what's up ahead. I pray for everyone in the community. We pray for all the workers in our city. I also pray for the protection of all our children, families, friends, and loved ones. Finally, bring us home safely to our families. In your mighty name we pray. Everybody said? Amen.
Thank you. Please be seated. All right, next item, we have citizens' comments.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, staff. Not knowing my position in five minutes, I'll go ahead and say this now. On the agenda tonight...
I'm sorry, can you start with your name and address, please?
Yes, it's Robert Lee, 1314 Gentiles. Please, excuse me, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
On the consent agenda tonight, I would request council pull this off for additional discussion and possible modification on the Medina Valley Baseball Association agreement. Overall, it doesn't look too bad, but there isn't anything in there that I have seen about any remuneration on the side of the ball fields to the city. I know we talked about removing, or it's talked about removing the free utilities, but there's nothing specifically that says that they will pay the utility cost out there. I found out that 10% of the water out of the airport well goes to the city side for municipal use. The ball fields probably use at least 8% of that 10%, yet I don't see any fairness in the airport fund having to basically pay for all the maintenance on the well. And so I think that needs to be discussed and whether the ball fields might have some part in that. Sublease, it talks in there about holding tournaments and other kinds of play out there. And in no way am I besmirching the, that association. They need to be in Castroville as long as the sun comes up. But I'm wondering, can they sublease that facility to someone else if none of their players are involved in play? Other words, can I say, now I've got it, I'm gonna sign it over to you? That's unclear to me by reading this agreement. And it says that monies they make on you, on the thing will go back into maintenance of the fields, which is good, but they should be required to pay taxes as required by the state on any profits they make. That doesn't take away from them getting money back from the sales, but I think they need to make sure that, like anybody that sells anything in Texas, they're supposed to be paying sales tax on it. So I would just ask that, that council remove that from the consent agenda and possibly move it to next week for additional discussion. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak for citizens' comments?
Promise this won't be bad. So I felt like...
You could also say, name and address.
Houston Marchman, 1616 San Jacinto. So what did, we, I've heard several folks saying, council, that we have multiple people, I mean, people on multiple boards. And I understand that, it's an issue, and thought about that. And so we kinda got a group together and started what we call Volunteer Castroville at Fiorella Friday. And simply the whole objective was to put it out there, say we have boards, we have cleanup, we have all of these things. And it wasn't designed to pick a board at that, it was just designed to, are you willing to volunteer? And so last Friday, we had a little banner and set up a signup sheet and we had like 30 people sign up. So I'm gonna convert that to an Excel file, so it's legible, and we'll keep going, but just letting you know that we do have volunteers. That's, that's it.
That's awesome.
Thank you. You're welcome.
I've just gotta comment really quickly. I really appreciate the fact that you're doing this. We've put it out in several newsletters and let people know about it, but there's nothing like getting out in front of people and actively engaging them, so that's, that's awesome. Appreciate that. Sorry, Tammy, go ahead. Yeah. I've heard that.
Tammy Alexander, 516 Vienna. Good evening. I am here today to comment on item number nine, Mayor's report. First, I'm eager to hear your position on how the citizens of Castroville may be able to reduce our ever-increasing utility bills. Like so many others that have discussed this with us, our utility bills in Castroville have risen to the level that many people on fixed incomes are having a difficult time to afford to live in comfort in their own homes without the need to choose between essentials of life such as medication or healthcare over the cost of utilities in Castroville. Something has to give. Castroville has some of the highest utility rates in this part of the state. On item B, SB 15, and this item under the Mayor's report, it says, "The actual impact of this affects small towns like Castroville for foreign developers over citizens." In my opinion, this is incorrect and misleading. This proposed legislation, as written, appears to me not to impact the city of Castroville. SB 15 states that the chapter, subchapter applies only to a municipality that has a population of 90,000 or two is wholly or partly located in a county with a population of more than 300,000. To my knowledge, the population of Medina County is not more than 300,000 and the city of Castroville is definitely not more than 90,000. While I agree that there are several issues before legislation that could impact the city of Castroville, concern developments, this is, in my opinion, not one of them. Thank you for your time and attention.
Great. Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak for citizens' comments? All right. So we're gonna do a little bit of juggling here. One, we're... One, we're going to remove, we had, to be quite just frank, we've had some issues with implementing the new software, so we're gonna move a couple of things around. One, I'm gonna remove the minutes for March 11th, because that is today. And there's some corrections on there, so we're just gonna remove the minutes from the consent agenda. And then in, after we get through that, we're gonna, in item number 8A, under Presentation, that actually needs to go under Discussion and Action Items. And I am going to move the discussion about moving, appointing the unexpired term of Councilman Herb Dyer for District 5 up into the slot at number 8. So, just to give you a heads up on that. So on the consent agenda, I have Accept and Approve Grant Resolution on True Narc Drug Testing Instrument Through the Federal Justice Assistance Grant, Consider and Take Appropriate Action on the Approval of the MVYBA License Agreement for 2024 through 2027, Accept 2024 Racial Profiling Report. This report has already been submitted to the Texas Commission on Law Enforcement, Approve a Contract with Schaumburg &amp; Polk for Engineering Services, and Adopt a Resolution Authorizing the Mayor, City Administrator, and Director of Finance as Signatory Authority for the USDA Forms Related to the Community Center Project. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Great, all in favor?
I'd like to have items C and E pulled.
I'm sorry, I have a motion and a second already on the table.
You didn't ask for any discussion.
No, it's consent agenda. We don't have discussion on consent agenda.
Well, I'd like to have C and E pulled.
Would you accept that to your, as an amendment to your motion?
Oh, I made the motion. I'm sorry, C and E? Sure.
Okay. Are you amenable to that change?
Sure.
And you're second? Great. So we're going to pull C and E from there, so the items that are remaining are B, D, and F, and I still have a motion and a second. Do I have all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. So the next item off of the consent agenda is Consider and Take Appropriate Action on the Approval of the MVYBA License Agreement for 2024-2027. Scott, do you wanna start with this and talk about the agreement as we have worked out with the MVYBA, please?
I just thought we was doing the minutes first, because it's 6A, but it doesn't matter.
What's that? 6A I pulled.
Because the minute said minutes for March 11th instead of.
What?
So they say minutes for March 11th, instead of, that's why I pulled them, instead of saying for February 25th.
We can get it on the next one, that's fine.
Can we just ask Sheena what her objection was? And maybe, because, I mean, for us, that's read the agreement.
Sure, okay.
Well, I've read the agreement. You know, Bob Lee brought up some good stuff. There's nothing in there about them paying sales tax to the city for their concessions and everything. There's, if they are subleasing to other entities in which they are not participating in, there's nothing in the agreement about that.
We did discuss that, so I can elaborate on that, but keep going.
And apparently, years passed and everything, there was something in there about if, whenever they leave for, you know, if we ever get the sports thing done and everything, they're supposed to remove everything that they built out there. And there's nothing in there about that. So.
Okay, so I need to double check on that last item, because that's still a requirement. You're right, they have to move, remove everything. The second issue with, so they have exclusive use of those fields, and that's the way we've negotiated from not this contract to the contract prior. When we first kinda sat down and talked to them about a three-year lease, we looked at the city's historic use of that property, which really has been non-existent, and determined that really the best, because they're the only outfit that's using it, and it's their improvements that are out there, they should have control over who gets to use it and who doesn't. So we basically gave them exclusive use of that property. So that's, so they are allowed to sublease it, and I believe they have held tournaments out there that were not MVYBA tournaments, but they were other tournaments they allowed to be held at that facility, and that's, again, they don't have to check in with us, they're just, they just did that. So that's, that's where that stands. On the other item, I mean, again, I don't know that it needs to be spelled out that the sales tax must be remitted, but that is something we can check on as our staff.
For stuff like that, when I've seen, when I've seen people do events like that, they typically do that as a fundraiser, and fundraising for a nonprofit, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't think they're, I don't know that they're a legal nonprofit. That's the issue. Like, I don't know if the MVYBA, we did look into that earlier this afternoon, because that was another question that had been raised, is are they, are they a nonprofit? And we couldn't find any evidence that they were. They may be.
If I could last, when this came up last time, we asked that specific question and it came back and said, yes, they are a.
501(c)(3).
Yeah, I had remembered, looked into it before.
And they were supposed to give us documentation to show that, because we asked that specific question last time.
Well, there's a list that either IRS or the state maintains that we can go and look for, and I recall, like, that fuzzy part of my memory, I can remember looking at a list, but I don't.
And I remember Devin actually telling us, yes, they checked on it, and that was.
Yeah.
So I guess we just need to verify.
Re-verify that, yeah. But either way, I mean, to, sales tax collections, we can verify what's going on there. Typically, the city has.
That doesn't necessarily need to be in the, in the contract with them. That is just if you're collecting sales tax and you need to pay sales tax, then you need to remit that sales tax.
Well, yeah, and again, typically, the city doesn't do any kind of enforcement when it comes to sales tax, like, that's a state thing, and we just don't get involved, but, okay.
Okay, so that was on the concessions, now still have the question on the sublease.
And that's why, I answered the sublease first, which is, the short answer is they have exclusive use of those fields, and yes, they are allowed to sublease them. Because again, all the improvements that are out there are improvements that they made, that they own, and they're, you know. In some ways, the way the contract read before, where the city, it gave the city rights to use it when they weren't using it, which we had never really exercised, that created greater liability for us, because we'd be using their stuff, and I don't, I can just, I can just see where that would go. The toilet didn't used to do this before your group came out, that kinda thing. So we negotiated that, again, not on this contract, but the contract prior, and said, like, y'all can have exclusive use. If you wanna sublease it to somebody, you can. And we allowed that, and we would continue to allow it. So the answer is yes, they can sublease, they have exclusive use of those fields.
Right, okay, so we need to add the statement then about whenever we move to a sports complex.
Yeah, so I don't know, I, I'm, yeah, I'm surprised this is just now being caught, but, because we've only looked at it like four or five times. But I'll have to go back and revisit that, because that definitely needs to be in there, because it's a requirement of the FAA. So I need to see that. You're listening.
Councilman King, you had a question, comment?
Yeah, because I guess I always assume they were a 501(c)(3), they had nonprofits, because if they're, if they're for profit, and there's, if they're for profit, then that would change my whole opinion of allowing them to use the fields the way we have supported them over the years. The fact that they're using city water and everything, I think, you know, you've mentioned to us in years, this past year, that because we are repairing that well and everything, that we don't have to pay the lease payments on that to the airport, but, because that's far more than what the lease payments would be. But in my whole mind, that was, that is a nonprofit organization, so I would, I would not be in favor of approving this unless.
We verify?
We verify that. But I thought they had been parred, I, last time this came up for discussion.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, I vaguely remember looking into it. I couldn't, with the amount of time I was given this afternoon to look into it, I couldn't get to an answer quick enough, but.
And, you know, we may wanna put in there a little, as if they, if we verify they are, as a 501(c), that way for net groupings and everything. It's there in writing, and we're not having to go and go fishing to find the information every time.
Yeah, smart. Councilman Mers, questions, comments?
No, we've talked about this before.
Okay. Is there the one last thing that we talked about, sublease? Does anybody have a problem with sublease? I don't foresee them actually.
As long as they're a 501(c)(3).
Right, okay. So we have two options here. We can either approve it contingent on verifying nonprofit status and making sure that that is included in the language, and the removal of any, at all, equipment, should they terminate their lease with us.
I would modify my motion with those two caveats, caveats.
You haven't made a motion yet on this one?
No, we. Oh, you're right, they make a motion on this one.
I like the bigger motion that we table this until that it's done, and we verified everything, and we got the new writing in there. Sure.
Do I have a second? Alright, motion dies. Do I have another motion?
I made a motion, we approve it with the verification that they are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit, and that the language be placed in the contract that all their equipment needs to be moved at the, at the, help me here.
Upon termination.
Termination of the contract.
Alright, do I have a second for that one?
I'll second that.
Great, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Motion passes.
I'm gonna look for staff clarification here. So if we find out they, for whatever reason, we misremembered, Councilman King, that they were a 501(c)(3) and we find out they are not one, then staff will treat this as not approved and bring it back.
Great.
For discussion.
Okay.
And from what I understood from that, is making sure that that language remains in there, that they must be a 501(c)(3).
Okay.
Yep.
And the removal of the other one, okay. The next item is to approve a contract with Schaumburg &amp; Polk for engineering services?
Yeah, my only question on this one was, on our current agreement with K-Freeze, is there any penalties that we face by terminating our agreement with them and switching over to this one?
No, because this is, we are not getting, keep in mind, we're gonna continue to work with K-Freeze, they continue to be our principal city engineer. This is only for the plan review services with Schaumburg &amp; Polk. We've had some issue with timeliness in getting those plan reviews done. And specific, this is some of the information I provide you all about shot clocks and how, you know, the state works. It, everything is developed, you know, kind of geared towards the benefit of the developer. So cities now have a very limited amount of time to get those plan reviews done and back, and we have to provide them specific language, and that sort of thing. And that just hasn't been happening. We've had multiple conversations about it over the last 24 months. Unfortunately, our developers are, they have rights, and they've been very understanding to a point, and patient to a point, but they'd like to see us resolve that. I first reached out to KSA to see if they could do the plan review, because I'm familiar with their services. Unfortunately, we had something, we were in the works of getting it all worked out, and at the exact same time, or right about that time, Pape Dawson bought KSA, and that creates an internal conflict for them, because Pape Dawson, most of the plans that we reviewed from the developers are coming from Pape Dawson. They aren't the only one, but that's, the majority of the plans, like, five of the six developers we're working with right now are all utilizing the services of Pape Dawson. So that created an issue, so we went back to the drawing board, and it just so happened that I'd had SBI, which is Schaumburg &amp; Polk, I've dealt with them personally in the past, found them to be a very good and reputable company, and they had specifically mentioned that they have plan review services. And so we did, Brianna and I looked into their, and I provided the resume of the gentleman that would be doing the reviews. We looked into them, we started talking to them, had our attorney review it. This is unfortunately when Ms. Santee passed away. And so, anyway, we've been, I'm really behind the eight ball in getting this resolved, so it's very, staff is anxious to get it done. But to clarify, K-Freeze will continue to be the city's engineer. We will be, we will probably be working with, I think, five or six engineers now, if you count KSA working out at the airport. We've got K-Freeze doing the principal engineering. We'll have Respec, which is doing kind of our water and sewer for the newer system development. They've done some of our planning. We'll have Schaumburg &amp; Polk doing the plan review, and I know I'm forgetting one. Oh, Schneider, we have Schneider Engineering, which does our, basically, essentially, our electrical utility. They provide stuff there. I mentioned Respec, yeah. And there may be, again, that's five, there may be six. And I really encourage, you know, cities in general, and certainly Castroville, that, you know, anytime you can use professional, multiple professional services, I recommend it, because it gives you a good window, real time, to compare one to the other, and allows you to have some conversations, like, hey, you know, A is doing better than B, and C, you're not really in the running, and, you know, and you can give task orders. So this is a task order contract. Again, they're being hired for plan review, but if they can bring things that would be advantageous to the city, that the other partners are not bringing, then we're gonna bring those forward and say, hey, Schaumburg &amp; Polk found this. And I'm gonna give you one example, and that is water loss. So I know in talking to Bruce, he, they had, his, East Medina had some great success filing stuff with Texas Water Development Board for water loss engineering. And I kinda let our engineers know that I was kind of, I was frustrated about that, that, you know, why are, as partners who know our plans and know our system, why are they not helping us identify these funding sources? So I put Schaumburg &amp; Polk on that. They're looking at some potential funding now. You apply for it, you may not get it. If they don't get it, again, you, you, you.
There's no.
Get to eat what you kill. And so if they kill it, they get to eat it. It's kinda, that's been my philosophy, and I think that's a sound philosophy to operate off of for a community that's looking to, we're rubbing nickels together to find a dime.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions or discussion? So do I have a move, a motion to approve the contract with Schaumburg &amp; Polk for engineering services?
So moved.
Great, do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Alright, next item is a proclamation recognizing the outstanding accomplishments of Mr. Jonah Winkler and Ms. Juliana Herrera, who we have right here. And if everybody can join with me and make sure that, keep an eye out for anybody that comes in with a water gun or a water bottle, they're having their senior challenge, and so we wanna, we wanna protect them. Houston, you're gonna have to throw your body in front of anybody that comes in.
If I'd known that, I got cold water in the refrigerator, I could have been distributing it right now.
I'm noticing a distinct lack of water up there.
And this is, this is something that, both of these were, they were honored at the Chamber of Commerce annual, what is that, the annual dinner, the annual awards. And I like acknowledging people that are doing outstanding things in the community. And, I mean, it's, it's such an honor to have you guys here as a part of the community. Your families have been, have done a great job. You have picked up that torch and grabbed a hold of it and just really run with it. I'm really excited to see what we have to come out of you, have to, to see coming from you in the upcoming years. And for this, I have a couple of things. So first, a proclamation, one honoring Juliana Herrera and one honoring Jonah Winkler for outstanding community leadership. Whereas the city of Castroville recognizes the importance of encouraging and fostering leadership in the youth of our community, and whereas the city of Castroville wishes to honor today two of its outstanding community members. Whereas the Castroville Area Chamber of Commerce recognizes Ms. Juliana Herrera and Mr. Jonah Winkler as the junior boy and girl, girl and boy citizens of the year, in that order. And whereas with Juliana, this outstanding young woman has demonstrated herself as a community servant through constant service to her community, and proven herself to be an exemplary student as the president of the MVISD Chapter of the National Honor Society, huddle leader for the Medina Valley Fellowship of Christian Athletes, area officer in Area 7 FFA Association, and community outreach coordinator for Peers for Positive Change. And Mr. Jonah Winkler, this outstanding young man has demonstrated himself as a community servant through constant service to his community, proven himself to be an exemplary student as a senior class treasurer, Peers for Positive Change officer, and a member of both the National Honor Society and Student Council. And whereas they both have demonstrated their enthusiasm for citizenship. Oh, sorry, this is, Mr. Winkler has demonstrated his enthusiasm for citizenship and patriotism as a cyber patriot. Now, therefore, I Darren Schroder, Mayor of the city, Mayor of the city of Castroville, Texas, do hereby proclaim Juliana Herrera to be an outstanding student and community member in the Castroville area, and do hereby further proclaim Juliana Herrera Mayor for the Day, March 11th, 2025. And I now therefore, Darren Schroder, Mayor of the city of Castroville, do hereby proclaim Jonah Winkler to be an outstanding student and community member of the, in the Castroville area, and do hereby further proclaim Jonah Winkler Mayor for the Day, March 11th, 2025. And if you can.
Thank you so much.
Do you want it for Henry or do you want it for Dais?
Oh, do you want the pitcher in there or?
Yeah.
That's Scott.
You haven't been here longer. It's not the same if you don't have the dower, looking at your chest or looking at your shoulder.
We're very organized.
Why? If I can see a word.
All right, I'm gonna ask you to come back up in one second. And if you can both come up here, please. Bring your proclamation.
One on each side. Cool.
I did the same thing to my son when he won it, when Christopher won it. It's like, come here, pitchers.
You're gonna hold a smile until it's completely uncomfortable.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Good job. What's up?
Yeah. I was about to say.
So it's a point of order. If there's a tied vote, do they both vote to do a tiebreaker? Because that could just perpetuate the issue somewhat. A tiebreaker, if you have two tiebreaker votes, might not help much, since they're both mayor for the day.
Oh, now I understand.
The next item, let's see, so the next item is discuss and take appropriate action to appoint a person to the unexpired term of Councilman Herb Dyer of District 5. Do I have a motion to appoint a person to the unexpired term of Councilman Herb Dyer?
I move to appoint Bob Lee to the unexpired term of Councilman Herb Dyer in District 5.
Great, do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Great, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Woo-hoo.
Take them. Thank you, sir, for your service. We're gonna get you sworn in here really quickly.
They're gonna do your swearing in real quick.
All right, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Robert Lee.
I, Robert Lee.
Do solemnly swear or affirm-
Do solemnly swear or affirm-
That I will faithfully execute the duties of City Council, District 5-
That I will faithfully execute the duties of City Council, District 5-
For the city of Casterville of the state of Texas-
For the city of Casterville of the state of Texas-
And will to the best of my ability-
The best of my ability-
Preserve, protect, and defend-
Preserve, protect, and defend-
The Constitution and laws of the United States and of this state.
The Constitution of the United States and the laws of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you.
For sure, help me God.
They'll be alarmed if I have to stand up behind my chair. Oh, no problem. And Deborah, you have?
I do. This one we can just do up here, because this is where the statement goes, point. We can just read it. I'll say something.
Yes.
You didn't get several pictures.
I, state your name.
Robert Lee.
Do solemnly swear that I have not directly or indirectly offered pay, promised to pay, contributed or promised to contribute any money or things that you have promised any public officer or opponent as a reward to secure my appointment or confirmation thereof. So help me God.
So help me God.
There you go. You can read this if you want, Tim, so you've read the specification inside. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Councilman Lee.
Yeah.
All right, next item, I don't have a presentation on this. There are really two items on here. The first one is announcement of the upcoming meeting to discuss ways for citizens to save money. Details will be in the newsletter in the utility bill. This is something that City Council has been very careful about looking at any new developers that have come in to ensure that we maintain a high quality for the city of Casterville. The good news is we've been very successful with that. The bad news is we've been very successful with that. The average price of homes, of the new homes that are being built, which are quite significant, are, their average is $450,000 to $750,000. It's good news for your property value. You never want your property value to go down, because that means that the city is dying and those, you look at the cities where their property values are going down, it's a bad situation. It's a double-edged sword, though, because as your values go up, your taxes go up. And so I, I've been working with SWBC, they have a group that can help people lower their property taxes. They give instructions about, they gave a presentation on this a couple of weeks ago in San Antonio, talking about how do you fight your own property taxes? How do you ensure that they don't get, that they are only appropriately increased? They provide the service as well, but this is not about them providing the service, although that will be available, but they want to teach people how to do that themselves. So, and we've had people that have talked about not knowing about the senior discounts, not knowing about other things that are available. So we wanted to make sure that we talk about any ways that you can save on your, especially the people that are on fixed incomes, how do we deal with the things that we have control over? And, and how do we move forward with that? So it's gonna be a quick little, I think it's gonna be 30 minutes, maybe an hour, just to sit down and get people educated, make sure that you've got all of the resources, you've got all the paperwork. There are senior discounts that are available on property taxes for the city. There's also utility on your electric bill, discounts for seniors. And so we wanted to make sure that people had that just readily available. So we're gonna be doing that at the Landmark Inn. All of the details will be in your utility bill. Please show up and invite your friends. I think this would be a really good thing. The next item, and Tammy had mentioned this also, SB 15, it's, it's new legislation, and this doesn't immediately impact us, because, to your point, we are not that size, but we are directly adjacent to somebody that's that size. And with, if you look at that, that subdivision that happened over by Showplace Hill popped up like overnight, I was looking at it the other day, and I'm like, how did they build that many houses all at once? So it definitely does impact us in different areas. But really, my point with this is there's a lot of different legislation. We just had one that passed in the last legislative session that has really tied our hands in dealing with some of the developers. We used to have control over subdivision ordinance in our ETEJ. That's basically, it's a half a mile from our city limits, that we had, we had authority over their ability to subdivide, so we could provide our own requirements with that. And that really was, that was a, a good tool to use in negotiation with them. Unfortunately, in the last legislative session, the, the legislators decided that they were gonna allow them just to remove themselves from the ETJ, so we no longer had that ability to. So where we used to have a carrot and a stick, we really only have a carrot now. So the, my thought with this is, I wanted to just bring this up, I, I really appreciate, we've had a lot better attendance at our city council meetings, both in person and online. It's really great for you guys to get involved with this, but also know who your legislators are. So we have Senator Flores, and he shows up a lot. He has come to our Alstation Festival, our St. Louis Day, he comes to our Fourth of July. He's very, very active in this area, a great guy to work with, and he wants to hear from you. And I would encourage you to reach out, any of these things that give, give people leverage over the cities, they continue to erode our, our control over what's happening around our borders, and it's been a real challenge. It's been a challenge that this council has had to deal with. As they've reduced and eliminated a lot of the controls that we had over that, it's been very, very difficult for us. So I would encourage everybody, reach out to them. Wes Fordell is your congressman for this area. He came to one of the, he came to a group meeting a few weeks ago, and he was talking about how he, how he understands some of the issues that the smaller towns are dealing with. A lot of the legislation is being written around the bigger cities. I commend them on doing that, that carve out for cities over 90,000 people, but with the other ones, the reason that they had passed the, is SB 2038, I think it was, SB 2038 or 2032, 2038, yeah. And one thing that I had asked them for, on that, and we were unsuccessful, was to carve out the small cities. Their reasoning behind that was, this last legislative session was all about Houston. It was all about tying the hands of Houston, because they were having some abuses over in that area. And in doing so, they said, if you can't, the reason that they wanted to pass this was because they thought if you couldn't vote for the people that are, that are making decisions based for your property, then you shouldn't have any ability to make those decisions. What they didn't recognize was the fact that we have farms around us, ranches around us that are, some of them are multiple times the size of Casterville. Some of them are the same size as existing Casterville. And so one single subdivision, being able to circumvent those rules and make their own rules, that really hurts a city like Casterville. And we've already had one property, a fairly large property, remove themselves from our ETJ. We've been approached by some other developers that wanted to do some fairly high density that was nowhere near the quality that we had been asking for, and, and I would anticipate them removing themselves from the ETJ. So we will lose our ability to, to be able to manage that. So please, reach out to your legislators. I do it a lot. I know that Scott talks to them. I know that city council members will reach out to them, but they want to hear from the general public as well. So please, pay attention to the legislation. If you want to get more information, we get pretty regular updates on that. We try and communicate that, but if you want to get more details, please let us know. All right, the next is on city council liaison reports. And I'll just go down the line. Councilman Mers, do you have, let's see, on the Parks and Recreation?
I, I do, sorry. Please let me pull up my notes.
Thanks.
Hey, hey.
I know.
For him.
I know, you're always in the middle. Okay, so while he's pulling that up-
He's in right on the line.
I know.
I'm just joking.
I'm good.
I do recall something about which direction you started with at the last council meeting.
I know, he did that, he told me last time.
I can't remember who complained about what, but it was him.
He's like, I'm in the middle, you started that end or this end, I'm always in the middle.
She make Phil go first.
All right.
All right, so at the last Parks and Recreation Board meeting, there was a, there were several Girl Scouts who came to present on wanting to put a Gaga Ball pit at the regional park, which the board approved. There was a lot of discussion of the wastewater treatment plant and the concerns of the board and the friends of the regional park. And there was discussion on the progress on the community center and on clearing the, clearing the lines, the irrigation lines in the park to water the soccer fields, and on the work on the splash pad. That's about it.
All right. Councilman King for the Historic Landmark Commission?
There were five properties that were, or projects that were asking for certificate of appropriateness, and four of them were approved with some agreed changes to them by the property owners, for instance, the type of windows and things like that. And one of them was denied, and that was, St. Louis Church wanted to put an electronic sign up instead of the sign they have, and that was denied. And the church was okay with it, they were able to come up with a different resolution, using smaller letters on the existing sign. So that was it.
Great. And then, Councilman Martinez?
Yep, so it was briefed that Army is meeting with Tony Gonzalez, his staff, and the high school staff about the STEM for high school students for aircraft maintenance, that's still in discussion. Mike briefed that the avgas is up by 30% over last month, and Jet A is down 50% over last month. Tech Dot submitted qualifications and working on hydrological study, so they're working on getting that going. The AWAS project is complete. Now they are working on the RNAV for runway 16. It will be completed by July 26th. FAA will be making sure we have vertical guidance for north and night flying. As of today, all obstacles have been removed. Airport budget, Mike is now full time. Half of his time will be administration, the other half will be working on the flight line out there, and it does not hurt the airport budget. The AT&amp;T pole lines have been removed, they were removed last week. They now have the painted chevrons on the runway, that eliminates straight coming on to the runways. They are having a new sign made with scrolling message for the airport. They're waiting on FAA grant for redoing fencing. The ARPA re-surfacing is on hold. Ram 20A, this is a big one. The Air Force is looking at redoing their airspace to, for training, doing their dogfighting and everything. So the MOA, they are looking at moving it west. So Mike is working on a draft environmental assessment. That way, we'll have that with, meeting with the, with the Air Force. And that's about it.
Great. And I know that the county's reached out to us about that last one as well, so they'll continue to coordinate. I appreciate the fact that, that the county is coordinating with us and other cities instead of just making blanket, blanket decisions, so I think it's really good that they're coordinating with us on that.
Oh, this is huge. I mean, we, just to give you a scope of how, how important this is to, to the military, they are now doing annual inspections that haven't been done for four years. They're playing catch-up. And it's, they, they see it, that the pilots, ground crew, everybody needs to have this training to keep us defended, so it's a big one.
Absolutely. There was one other thing, one second, on the, the parks-
Was it the joint meeting request?
No, I was gonna say, with the, the community center, there's been a lot of questions around that. That is out in, that's gonna be in the utility bill also, kind of an explanation of what has happened with that, and gives you a timeline of what happened that is still, that's still going. City staff went to Seguin last Thursday to meet up with them, and one of the reasons that we passed the, the ability for them to sign is because I wasn't able to attend that one. I was able to sign the things ahead of time, but it just gives them more flexibility to ensure that this continues to go on. So thanks for your diligence with that. Councilman Lee?
Yes, Mayor, since you have two positions now to do, and I have represented some council, would you like me to pick up the library or I'm in zoning as far as liaison?
I think that, and we're gonna talk about this in discuss, the future agenda items, I think that we talk about that, because we're, we have to deal with the, the other council member as well, so we'll probably do that at the next one, if that's okay.
I don't know if I just go ahead and attend the library meeting, if they-
Absolutely. Or if you want to volunteer, you're here first, so I mean, you, you can get dibs.
I'll do it.
Okay.
Mr. Dyer was the rep for the library, so.
So Councilman Lee has dibs on the library.
Was it the joint meeting request?
No, I was going to say with the community center, there's been a lot of questions around that. That is out in, that's going to be in the utility bill also, kind of an explanation of what has happened with that, and gives you a timeline of what happened that is still, that's still going. City staff went to Segin last Thursday to meet up with them, and one of the reasons that we passed the ability for them to sign is because I wasn't able to attend that one. I was able to sign the things ahead of time, but it just gives them more flexibility to ensure that this continues to go on. So thanks for your diligence with that. Councilman Lee?
Yes, Mayor. Since you have two positions now to deny, I've represented some council. Would you like me to pick up the library or planning and zoning as far as liaison?
I think that, and we're going to talk about this in the future agenda items, I think that we talk about that because we're, we have to deal with the other council member as well. So we'll probably do that at the next one, if that's okay.
I don't know if I just go ahead and attend the library meeting.
Absolutely. Or if you want to volunteer, you're here first. So I mean, you can get dibs. Okay.
Mr. Dyer was the rep for the library, so.
So Councilman Lee has dibs on the library?
They have a meeting this Thursday.
Great. Thank you. All right. Next item is accept and approve resolution through the Texas Department of Emergency Management for a generator.
So this item, and I apologize because that's what you were pointing out earlier. I think it was intended to be in the consent, possibly. But anyway, it's, you really shouldn't move something into consent that wasn't on there originally, so we're moving it down to discussion. You should have all the backup, but essentially, we have an opportunity, the police department has an opportunity to go apply for a generator grant. We may or may not get it. But since we're replacing a legacy generator that's been there for quite a while, but that hasn't been working reliably. The last time, I'm going to let Chief speak to this because I know you've got some particulars. I think the last time we had someone go out and look at it, it cost us $1,200, $2,500, something like that.
At least. In addition to that, what we looked at is the reliability of it, is actually having an automatic switch to kick it on. We were going through, and I was having the sergeant doing it weekly, testing. It was working fine, then it quit. We had somebody come out, replace some parts, didn't work, came back out, worked on it again, and it started for about three weeks, and then it died again. I've talked to Councilman King about someone else looking at it, but I'm going to research that as well in case we don't get this grant as far as the generator working. So I think it's a 2007 model is what it is. So, and as Mr. Dixon pointed out, it's not the guarantee that we're going to get the grant. My hat's off to Officer Sapper that put this grant together. I think he was standing on one leg and juggling at the same time, jumping through hoops with TDM and FEMA related items that they wanted. So hopefully, we'll get the grant and move forward with it. We had to have an engineer look at it and actually sign off on it as far as the slab. We also had to get a signature from the historic commission as far as being able to put that in there. Even though we had one there, they still wanted that letter.
And Councilman King stepped up and did that for us.
Yes, he did. Quite efficiently. Thank you.
Charge a lot of money for it.
I get my next ticket waived.
I just want to mention, so we already have our generator grant in with, through TDM with FEMA that's now three years old, that we have not heard back from FEMA about. So I don't know when we're going to hear from FEMA, but I will be, I don't know, I'll be very upset if they get the grant and we don't even get a response, and we spent it ours three years ago. We updated it recently. I know the mayor was on all those emails that went back and forth between TDM and us because we had to go get updated pricing, et cetera, that FEMA requested. So we are, just for y'all's information, there, now, this will be two different generator grants we're seeking. One is exclusively for the PD. The other one would provide one for here at City Hall and then various well sites and lift stations where we would need backup facilities in case of emergency. I think there's five generators on the other grant, and the total grant is like one and a half million dollars or something.
Okay.
It's a lot of paperwork.
All right. Any questions?
No.
Please, Mr. Lee, Councilman Lee?
Yes, sir. That being a military contract generator, you know, parts could be a problem in the future. They now have the service manual and the technical manual for the generator, so that wasn't available before, and that should help nail down what's written on the screen as for the, as what the faults are.
Right.
I had a question about the generator you're asking for, and the chief answered it. It's to power the entire facility because that's a rather large generator, 200 kW. That's, that's pretty big. But no doubt, he needs to have, it is a critical facility for safety in Castroville. There may be, not on this agenda, but some interim things with
Correct.
power units powered by batteries that would allow them to stay in operation for a number of hours, regardless of whether they got the grant or not. And so they would never be down.
Yeah, because there are command and control center in the event of a disaster
Yeah.
and everything. We need to make sure they have everything up and running.
Well, the other thing I want to mention to y'all, and I'm not, I'm recommending y'all take this action, that's staff's recommendation, but just be aware that one of the things we're going to talk about as we get into the CIP planning, probably May-June timeframe, is facilities. And we're going to, we're issuing a community survey, we're going to get input, that sort of thing. But that's something else to consider, that is, if you do decide to build a new P, a new police department or station at some point in the next three to five years, this generator needs to be sized appropriately, or we'll need to redo the wiring at that new facility so that, and I think that's part of the issue is, one reason this provides power to the entire facility is, well, you'd have to, you'd have to change the way it's wired up to only power certain circuits or whatever you do. And that's, it's not, this building is not wired in that way at this time. But if we do a new facility, we could certainly look at some of those things and really think through, okay, if we're going to move this generator off of this building to the new buildings being built, what are the backup areas that need to perform, must perform in an outage? And obviously, that's.
For my previous life, that's what we did. It didn't power up the whole facility. It only powered up a certain area of that facility, and that takes an engineer and someone else with the electrical knowledge and everything else on how to do that.
Just to consider.
So Councilman Lee had one other thing?
Yes, sir. I noticed in here that the request, and I understand that you applied for the grant, it may not be for, that you buy that specific generator, that the city really needs to investigate the maintenance requirements for diesel. Diesel goes bad, and so there has to be a regular process in order to ensure that that does not happen.
Correct.
If you've got propane or natural gas, you know, the odds of having a problem with your injectors are about zero.
Right.
But go up exponentially with any other kind of liquid fuel.
And I appreciate the manual that you gave me, Councilman Lee. I'll use that.
All right. Further discussion? Do I have a motion to approve?
Sub moved.
A motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, Councilman Mayor.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Have a good evening.
Next item, we have application for open board and commission positions. For this, we have Deborah Howe.
Hopefully, I have them right this time. Last meeting, we had this on the agenda, and we moved it to this agenda. We do have, I know three of the members that have applied. I'm not sure if the third person on my library, possible library board is here. And I will butcher your name, I promise. Ms. Benedetti is here to have y'all meet her. Also, Mrs. Estrada is here. And as I said, I'm not sure if Ms. Ramirez is here or not. I did send her an email, and I didn't get a response, so it may be that we have to move her to the next meeting. And that's for the library board, which we need members on this board. We have approximately, I think we have the total of four right now on the full board, and we have two positions open on the alternate positions. And they've been having issues with people being able to come to the meeting, so they've had to postpone a few with lack of forum. Also, we have one member tonight, or one citizen tonight, Melanie Nouse is here for the alternate position that is open in the planning and zoning.
Great. All right. Well, can we start with Ms. Benedetti?
Benedetti. Good evening. I'm Bertha Benedetti. I'm a retired teacher from Medina Valley ISD. After a 30-year career, I retired 10 years ago. I was, the last 19 of those years were in sixth grade English Language Arts and Reading. And over those 30-year careers, all the schools that I taught at had a library. And I remember how my students loved to go to the library on library day. They'd get all excited. And we need to recapture that excitement because I noticed that every school that had a good library had a very good learning environment. And I feel very firmly about the library in a community, in a city, being the heart and the soul of a city and community. And I want to be a part of that. I want to help contaminate the community with the love of reading because I'm a lifelong reader. And to be honest, I didn't start reading for pleasure until I was about like 30 years old because I didn't have time before that. It was all studying for tests and reading for school and all this. But finally, at 30, I had time, and I'm a voracious reader now. I'm a member of four book clubs. One of them is at the Castroville Library. And when I heard that there was two openings, you know, I was shocked that my friend over here, Shelley, beat me to the punch. She was like, oh, you know, she got in before me. And I was the second one who told Lauren that I was interested in doing this. And so I'm very excited about it, and I hope to get on it because I'm looking forward to it. And in the 10 years I've been retired, people ask me, how's retirement? And I tell them, it is wonderful because you only do what you want to do. And I'm here tonight to tell you, I want to do this. And in the 10 years that I've been retired, I have only dropped one of the things that I've picked up. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. I love that kind of passion. That's awesome. All right. Then we have Michelle Estrada?
Hi, I'm Michelle, but everybody calls me Shelley. That's because when I was born, my grandmother said, good, we'll call her mush. But just as a background, I was in the Air Force for 20 years and then worked civil service for 20 years. When I was working civil service, I was working in California, and we had to go to meetings quarterly. And when I started going to these meetings, there was a man that I met at the meetings, and his name was, his last name was Cease. And he said he was from Castroville. And I said, really? And so we would talk at each one of these meetings every quarter for five years. And he would tell me about his little town he was from. And after that five years, I went to Abu Dhabi. After Abu Dhabi, they sent me to Lackland. So what did I do? I ended up working with Charlie. And he says, come out to Castroville. I want to show you a place to build a house. And we sat in the little cafe here, and we're talking, and he's telling me all about Castroville. And he says, see that little room over there? Yeah. And he says, that used to be a living room. And down the hall, and a door in there? Yeah. He says, that used to be my bedroom. And I said, what? And he says, I used to live in this house. He says, my grandfather owned this house. And see that antique shop back there, which was an antique shop? And he says, my grandfather owned that gas station there. And then he went on more about Castroville, and I said, okay, I'm moving out here. And I moved out here in 2008, after my house was built. And you know where my house is?
Yes, ma'am, I do.
My brother would come and visit me. My brother now lives down the block from Sheena. So like what she was talking about reading, I taught my daughter to read when she was two because that was my pastime also, was reading. And she got upset when I stopped reading to her. And she said, mommy, I don't know how to read anymore. So I said, okay, fine. I'll read you your books, and you read me mine. So I would read to her, and she would read me my Time magazine. So that was our stories at night. So yes, I'm a reader also. But I would love to work in the library. I retired probably two years earlier than she did. And we both now have known each other for, what, 10 years? But, and we both, it looks like going for the same job. But I would like to work in the library, so.
Great. Well, thank you so much. Now Charlie Boy inspired a lot of people. Pretty amazing guy. All right. And do we have Juliana here?
I don't have, that I'm aware of.
Different Juliana.
Yes.
I mean, unless you want to also volunteer.
I'll try to reach out.
So you don't have to. You get a pass.
I'll try to reach out to her again to see if she's still, if she'll be available.
All right. Ms. Nouse?
Hi, my name is Melanie Nouse, and we have been residents of Castroville almost for five years. When we moved here back in 2020, it wasn't an appointment or anything like that, it was a choice. We came, we spent a week in Castroville, we asked all kinds of questions. If you want to know a lot about Castroville, you go to Magnolia Coffee, and you ask questions about the town and the people. We also went to the hardware store and asked questions about the town and decided that this is where we wanted to invest. Actually, not long after, so we moved here and bought a house right away in the city. It's very important for us to live in the city where we serve. Not long after moving here, I met Arnie and asked Arnie where, how do I get involved? And he gave me some different thoughts and advice based on my experience. And so I have been a small business owner. I owned a company called Southern Suite Events and Design. And also, in our last city, was on the board for the Heart of Scottsville. So the Heart of Scottsville, we were a nonprofit and a board that worked with the, with the city of Scottsville to bring improvements. Part of my job was to write the grants for those improvements, and I did a lot of that, well, my unpaid job, right? My volunteer job. And so I helped write the grants, but as the board, we worked with the city to bring those improvements to the downtown and historic areas. And I really loved it. And so when Arnie gave me some ideas, nothing kind of fit what my love was, which was for the city, for improvement, for the, for planning, for zoning, for those areas. And so I started getting involved in different ways. I am, I work with Connecticut Kids, so I work at Alley Walks and volunteer for Connecticut Kids. I also am a founding member for Medina County Women for Good. There was seven of us who really recognized that we here in Castroville do not have a lot of places for nonprofits to get grants. And we also do scholarships. And so we started, and we've given away our first grant, and so I'm a part of that. I'm really a big, a part of the chamber and go to chamber meetings and try to be involved as much as I can. And you're probably like, well, why do you want to serve on planning and zoning? I really want to see this, our city flourish. I, for our church, one of the things that I have volunteered to do is I am on the buildings and grounds. I'm the first woman on that committee for our buildings and grounds for the church. And it's because I'm very interested in those kinds of things and building. I get all of the, I work with the city to get the permits for our team and get all of, just everything that I can do for that. And so I really love the city. We desire to stay here for a long time. And so this is kind of my first area to step into, and then hopefully be able to expand on in the years to come in service to our city.
Great. Thank you for everything you do.
Thank you.
All right.
I'm sorry, how do you pronounce your last name?
Nouse.
Nouse, like mouse but with an N. Got it.
Or like Nouse without the S.
Well, the K is silent, so light knock.
All right. So do I have a motion to approve these three, two different positions? Do you want to hear the positions again that are open? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion for the library board to put Ms. Bertha in position two. Ms. Michelle in the alternate one. And Ms. Ramirez in alternate two.
Sorry. She hasn't attended the meeting yet. Do you want to wait and speak with her first?
Okay.
I prefer that, please.
Sorry. I amend it, remove the recommendation for alternate two. And then Ms. Nouse in alternate one for the planning and zoning.
I'll second that.
Great. Any further discussion?
Yes, sir.
Please?
I wish all of those people would move into the city of Castroville and be residents and continue to serve on other boards and commissions and maybe council because you're all outstanding.
Absolutely. Well said. All right, I have a motion.
Are the three we heard from not all citizens?
Oh, one is outside the city.
One that's outside.
They qualify.
Yes.
I must have read the wrong one. I thought she was.
Oh, yes. No. So Mrs. Estrada is on Geneva. And Ms. Benedetti is on County Road 271. Okay, so I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? Motion passes.
Thank y'all.
Thank you all for your service.
Thank you.
And thanks again, Houston, for being a cheerleader for us.
And as I said, the library board has a meeting on Thursday. And I'll try to get y'all the agenda, but it starts at 6:30, I believe. And then, of course, planning and zoning, we have an upcoming special call. I'll get, you'll be on the list also for the next Monday, I guess.
Mondays, yeah.
Yes.
At 5:30.
Yes.
And, you know, just.
She reached out. Good. Thank you. It'll be here.
That actually brings up a really great point. We've had people that have wanted to be on boards, and have seen that they were full, and so they said, never mind. I'd encourage, if you want to be on a board, if you have a passion for something, let, put in your application, let Deborah know, show up to the meetings. You can be, even though you can't necessarily participate in them, you can be there, you can listen to them, you can coordinate with the, with the board members afterward. There's nothing keeping you from being involved with that. Same thing with city council. If you don't want to serve on city council, show up to the meetings and know what's going on, and be a part of that, you know, coordinating with, with your representatives there. So, okay, next item is discuss and take an appropriate action regarding design-build approach to City Hall as discussed by McKinstry. Now, did you have the, did you have that presentation modified?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I think we tweaked the slides a little bit.
And tweaked a couple there.
Great. Scott, you want to introduce?
Is it on over there? Okay. So we're going to tag team. This is Gabriella at the podium with McKinstry. McKinstry is yet another engineering service, so you know. And I, probably across 14 years, I've only just met Gabriella. And it's kind of, I'm a little bit ashamed because I've really been struggling with how to move forward with the City Hall project, knowing that right now, what council has done is approved the interest that's earned off the general fund money that's not committed, that's sitting in our, our bank, basically earning interest. That interest, y'all would earmark for future improvements to this City Hall building, knowing that, and right now, it's around $400,000. So y'all picked a great time to decide to do that within the last two years. But knowing that that's not going to be enough to actually fix the building, and trying to figure out how we leverage some grants, et cetera, I was expressing my frustration to Keith Lutz, to our judge, our county judge. And he said, you know, you ought to reach out to McKinstry. They've really helped the county quite a bit. And I was embarrassed, because I know of McKinstry, I know, you know, crossed paths with various representatives in just about every city I worked in. But they had not come to my mind as one of the various alternatives that I'd already explored. So that, on that recommendation, I reached out to McKinstry, had some conversations. And what developed is this meeting tonight to talk about, how do we move forward on the City Hall building? So for that, I do have a presentation, and I'm going to put that up on the screen. And we'll tag team between Gabriella and myself. That's if we can get this to work. It should work.
As you're bringing that up, I'd like you to remind people, the reason that we began discussing this, I think Scott put it really well. He said, as stewards of this amazing building, there have been minor things that have happened. But if you look around, with paint peeling, with areas cracking, we got the roof leaks fixed. But this, this building is in pretty substantially bad repair. So as he's looking at maintaining and improving at the same time, this is why we've been looking at this.
And so I guess as we get the slides up, I can introduce myself a little bit more. So I know there are some familiar faces because of the work that we've done with Medina County before. I know was there when the local historical commission won an award recognition from the Texas Historical Commission. So we've actually supported the county before in preserving and restoring the courthouse over there. As some of you will know, the Texas Historical Commission tends to have limited funds. In this past round, they had about 145 million worth of applications, and only about 40 million to give. And so those are kind of what we're used to working with. McKinstry's worked for a long time with historic buildings, but I specifically work a lot with rural counties. So Medina, Frio, Brooks, Hill, E. Rath, and a lot of counties that are near city centers that are growing, but that want to have control over their growth, control over how it is that they invest and expand. And a lot of counties that like to think about how they can invest and expand their facilities without raising taxes, to do everything that they can first, to use grants, and financing, again, in cases where they don't have to raise taxes. So it's a little bit about myself. Been with McKinstry for a while now. And before working here, I did energy grid design in rural areas, and also advocated for school districts to get more funding from the state. And so.
Gabriella's going to speak a little bit about her team, and introduce some of the other people that we met with about a month ago, I guess now. But I'm going to talk about, to the mayor's point, about kind of how we ended up where we are. So this is just the agenda for tonight. We'll go over the renovation project overview, the design-build approach, and how you all do those, do that approach. City Hall, the utility analysis, what you found when you kind of looked at our bills, what we're eligible for in terms of funding, and then kind of how your process looks from a streamlined approach. First, you know, kind of talking about City Hall, how we ended up. This building was built in 1854. I didn't realize until I was preparing this, that there actually was a structure on the grounds before this building was built, that this building replaced. So they had, I kind of joke about the fact that we've had this temporary building out of the public works yard for a while. But apparently, you know, even back in 1854, they did the same thing. They had a temporary building for City Hall, or for the, actually, the county courthouse. It was there for not a short amount of time, I want to say four or five years. And then they ended up building this building to replace that. And this is, this started out as that county courthouse in 1854. Single story additions were added in 1939, became a school. In 2000, the windows were replaced. So these are kind of rough, some rough deadline, or time periods. In 2012, the downstairs stairs windows were re-glazed, repaired. So you can see about every 10 years, these windows deteriorate to the point where they need to be maintained. And then 2016, upstairs windows were repaired, and there was a new metal roof put on. In August 23, we had, we viewed, the city council adopted draft plans for what the remodel would look like, including an annex building. We'll see some pictures of those in a minute. And then in February of '24, those, the final plans, kind of this, of what that building would look like, were adopted and approved. And that was after some back and forth with the Texas Historical Commission about what could and couldn't be allowed, and that kind of thing. Let's advance. There. Just talking about stewardship of the building, and highlighting some of the issues that we see around, at least it's been my experience, when you live in a place, sometimes, or work in a place, and then you kind of almost become sign-blind, immune, don't see the issues, even though they're kind of around you. And so, at, you know, at the suggestion, I went and took some pictures, and it just reminded me, too, of some of the issues. And these are all around us. You see some of the window sill issues, where mold and deterioration of the plastering on the walls. Some of these are minor, frankly. They're not structural issues. We have had the structure reviewed. It has done some settling. We're in a massive drought. We've been in a massive drought. Any building, even building with, buildings with thick walls like ours, still have issues. But thankfully, that's, we don't have, you know, serious or major concerns with the foundation. But we are seeing some settling and some cracks, other things related to that. Yeah. So that's, that's what I'm saying. That's signs of, that could be, there's a couple of different things. There's moisture that's getting into the building that, that is causing, you know, with that moisture, gets hot and cold, it's contracting and expanding, and that's causing plaster to crack. But it's also some settling that's taking place in the building. So it's a little bit of both. I'm not an engineer, as I'm reminded often. And frankly, glad I'm not. But yeah, there's a couple of different reasons why you see that. But again, the foundation's been looked at within the last year, and we're in pretty good condition there. Just kind of what we're looking at, okay, I was thinking there's, I was thinking there's more to this. I think I've changed a little bit.
There's some elevation photos. You mean of the floor plans? If you click through a couple more.
Yeah, there's the elevations. So this is just the back view of what the new addition would look like. So you're actually not looking at the front of the building, you're looking at the back of the building. And you'll see it kind of reminds you of the front. And that's on purpose. That's with the magnificent, magnificent work of our architect.
Brently Hightower.
Brently Hightower.
He literally wrote the book on Texas courthouses.
Yeah, he's fantastic. And a young guy for having written a book. This is kind of what the floor plan would look like on the downstairs. You'll see, in this room, the council chambers would remain, but they'd be flipped 180 degrees, so that, you know, the dais would be over there. It removes the hallway and does some other things. It's really about building efficiency in the building. You see on the backside, that separate annex, all the bathrooms would be moved into that annex. That's where the staircase would be located, and HVAC and other things, utilities would be back there. And then there's your upper story. You see those blank areas to the left and right. That's because those, they are only one-story buildings. We're not proposing changing that. And again, additional brush strips on that second story of the annex, and how this proposes how the upper story would be used. All right. So I want to back up a couple of slides and get back to, because I'm going to hand it over to Gabriella to cover some of this. Let's see. So.
And one of the things that I think you, I appreciate all the detail that you put into this. This is, I think, really important to do this. One of the things that, that he didn't discuss, that we've discussed over the past couple of years, is how do we deal with the growth that's happening inside of the city? City staff will have to increase as we go forward, and it's finding these scaling units, figuring out how do we grow our personnel, our services. As our tax base increases, we have services that we need to provide. And looking at City Hall, the way that it's set up right now, it's almost at capacity. And so the two options were either to move City Hall, which I've seen in previous master plans as an option. But we had discussed how important it is to keep City Hall here in the core of downtown, not turning the building over to somebody else, not putting it out for lease, but really owning this and being great stewards of this. And so this is why we're looking at doing these different items. Upstairs hasn't been used in, I don't know, 50 years?
For storage.
And so that's why the floor plans that you see, as we make sure that we have ADA compliance, and make sure that things are actually accessible. And that's been one of the barriers to, to doing this.
Yeah, somehow I'm missing it. There's a whole nother page of upstairs pictures, and it's just not on.
So part, I also talked to your THC representative, and she kind of gave me a crash course on what she, what her thoughts were when she reviewed some of the plans that you had, that for the most part, they agreed with the scope that you wanted to tackle. But they did want to have, say, for example, on the window sills, I know that's a hard thing to get them to budge on, but they do want to keep those, the historic sills. And then the expansion. So they do want to have a say that it's completely understandable that almost every City Hall courthouse is growing beyond the bounds of their historic buildings. And so they were open to the expansion. They just wanted to have a say on how far away it is from the building. That way, they can manage the preservation of the building itself. And so this is just a list of a few dates of when things have happened, just to track how long this has been in the works. I know the past couple of weeks, my team has been looking at the utility bills, been looking at the drawings that have been produced before, the work that y'all have been gathering and tackling for the past few years. This is a snapshot of our team. I will say, we do have a pretty big team. Our Texas team is a Texas team. We do not bring in typically resources from Seattle, or from any of our other regions. We use our local teams, unless there is something like a battery storage solution, or an EV charging solution that y'all want to implement here, that our state group typically doesn't do. We will pull in expertise from out there. Aside from that, our construction, engineering, and architectural teams are here in Texas. So you'll see here, we have quite a bit of a, of a reach. On our team there, you'll see Drew Johnson. He will be the, he would be the project director here. You have Kevin Callis. He is our, was our director of construction, has now moved up. He is the person that has advised Hill County, E. Rath County, and countless across the south on how to tackle justice facilities, courthouse renovations. And he's done a lot of the back and forth of the THC to ensure that we're in compliance, and things are moving forward efficiently.
When we met, Kevin was the idea guy. He had.
Yes.
Different ideas about how to find funding, and that kind of stuff.
Kevin's been doing this for quite some time, and he, his background's in construction. So I think earlier, you mentioned that we are an engineering firm. We, part of what we do is engineering. So when we think about the types of projects, typically, you'll hire an engineer, or, and then you'll hire an architect separately. You might hire someone to do plumbing, electrical, all the different pieces separately. And then the city will have to manage all those different contracts and different folks. Our team works a little bit differently, where we have in-house expertise all across those areas. And so here, you'll see to the left, the traditional way of doing work. It's the way that a lot of public sector folks do work. So you'll see there, the organization of, can everyone hear me if I'm farther away? So you'll see here how you have your owner, that would be the city. You then have separately the architect, separately the construction manager, and then separately, a bunch of trades, people and contractors. So what happens is all of those different contracts spread out liability, and the liability ultimately of the project falls on the city. You are the liable party to make sure that it gets executed. That tends to look like change orders happening. That's a frequent kind of side effect of this process. This process can work in some spaces. But a lot of the clients that we've worked with love the structure on the right. And the structure on the right is that you have one design builder, the risk and liability gets shifted to us. And we are under contract to make sure that the outcomes that we promise, the project that we promised, is what gets implemented. We have a GMAC, so a guaranteed maximum price. If we pass it up, we cut you a check, or we cover the difference. Unless you ask, I want a bigger expansion, I want to add this other building, that, that then triggers an extra task order or change order. That's how we work. And this is independent research that was conducted, not from McKinstry. And this is what they've shown that the design-build process does. So these are gained efficiencies in the delivery speed, in the cost. I will say also, our Texas team does a really good job of hiring local when possible. There are some places that are pretty rural and pretty small, where they actually want to bring larger firms from their surrounding cities. But oftentimes, we work with people that want to hire local, want to hire an architect that they're happy with. Like here, I think you have an architect that you're happy with. We are more than happy to work with them. We've also worked to train up your local workforce sometimes. So there's been local contractors that aren't used to a certain platform, aren't used to a certain standard of delivery, or way that they get organized. And we've actually trained them up to work with us, and then to move on in the future. So that's been the perks of, of working with McKinstry as a firm. I'll, I'll pause here. I know when you look at maybe some of the work in other areas, we've been able to strategically choose different funding sources for our different projects. So we've done it with rural counties, especially in places where you can't, you know, there's only so much that you can finance, or there's a limitation to that financing, even places that have a deficit in their budget, where they're really limited. And so we've worked with them to get them funding from FEMA, USDA, Tedom, even private sectors. So in some areas where there's really large ranches, or that there's really large businesses, we've even formed packages so that they can sponsor portions of work. So we've gotten really creative. We've even done some pretty big projects with City of Corpus Christi, City of Austin, where you, we have to do a lot of that, really creative, kind of piecemealing together, not the projects, but the funding. And so we're used to managing by America requirements, and all the different requirements with every different department that you work with. This is the process that we typically follow. Like I said, you'll never have to track down contractors, you'll never have to chalk down engineers and architects separately. That team that you saw, Kevin, Drew, and I will always be your, your touch points. If not, I'll give you our VP's phone number, and you can call him if we're not answering. But this is typically the tiered process of development. So we start with owner's project criteria. That's let's sit down, let's take a look at what a lot of the documentation we already have. We sit down with those that are going to be in the building, using the building, and we'll get a better feel for how you want to use it now, and how you want to use it in the future. We'll start looking to funding sources from the very beginning in that OPC stage. Then we move into what we call a PSA. It looks like a task order, one. And that's the preliminary services agreement that gets us to 60% design. We sit down again with you all, with the occupants, We sit down again with you all, with the occupants, with anyone else that wants to ask questions and verify funding timelines, schedules, and we'll get then approval to do a design build proposal. That brings us through the finish, the rest of the percentage of design and into implementation. So this process more.
Can we talk a little bit about that while we're here?
Go ahead.
Because I know this is probably, it's likely a question that the council's going to have. So we did work, as you know, I worked with Alamo Restoration to, and a, a number of consultants that they brought in, whether it was HVAC guys or architectural or engineering or what have you, to review the building and to help us put together what would, what would be needed to go out for bid. Because that was the original goal is help us develop a project and then we'll go out for bid. How much of that effort do you foresee or do you believe y'all would be able to reutilize? So we aren't basically having to pay to have the same work done twice. Do you have any idea?
Most of it. So what you could possibly cut into is that whole OPC stage. So typically there's a cost associated with that potentially with the amount of work that you've done. We'd be able to go straight into PSA. That's not common, but we have done it with places like E-Rath County that also had quite a bit of work done. Didn't want to be a project manager, so they went ahead and transitioned over to design and build. And they cut costs, well, didn't cut because you do pay for.
Right.
The work that you've done, but it wasn't wasted. We were able to use it. In some areas where we think that prices for certain things can be more competitive, we'll go do a sub bidding process and see if we can improve that or certain specifications that we think are better. We'll go back and talk to your architect or talk to who you've used before. But if you have someone that you for sure want to use, we'll, we're happy to work with them.
And for the council, it's just for your knowledge, we spent about $80,000. It is, I don't have that figure, the exact figure, but it's about $80,000 I would, I would expect to date on just the design portions of the building, work with the architect and then having all of the various things that were needed, whether it was looking at the HVAC or digging the test pits and looking at the foundation or what have you. So that's about how, that's where we're at right now as far as what, what's been expended.
Structural would be really useful. That would have been one of the first things we would have done. You already have it done. So it makes us move a little bit faster. I think the next slide is the, the funding sources. Oh.
Utility loads.
We can go this way in this order. So the first thing that we look at is what savings can we produce with utility savings, right? The amount of light that we're using, the amount of water that you're using, the way that your HVAC is operating, what can we save? I, I will say that there, there are savings that are possible to capture. However, they're not too great. Part of that is just because of the size of the building. The trade off with sizes, the bigger you are, the bigger the savings can be. So we have there that your energy savings per year would be about 1,134. That's not a whopping amount, but there is efficiency that you could gain there. There are a couple of other tidbits here about more in depth. Are there any questions? I can answer those. If not, I can move on to water. The, kind of the big picture is how much can we save? That's a little over a thousand a year. For water, we did see a peak in fiscal year 2024 between October and into January. That peak was four times greater than your typical usage, but even then you have very low water usage. So those are good things. It means there's not an immense amount of waste with this building. The downside to that is programs like CECO, programs like a lot of energy efficiency grants do want it to be.
Higher. What is their target?
You have to have a project payback of 10 to 15 years.
Yeah. So that's a, yeah, it's unfortunate because I would, you're looking at this building, you would think it'd be leakier than it is. You've got single pane windows that, I mean, we're, we're air conditioning and, and heating this building all the time. So I would expect that it'd be higher, but it just, again.
Square footage.
Yeah, what you're doing right now and what you're showing us is it just, it just, those numbers don't make, unfortunately, for a lot of those energy efficiency type things. And that's what, essentially it's a very similar project to what we did with AMI. So AMI, it's, I say similar, AMI looks at your water loss recovery and the meter, the delta between, the meter accuracy, where it was and where it is now. And it uses, utilizes those savings to then pay the note on the, the project, right? That's, that's basically how we did the AMI project. This would be substantially similar, similar if you could make the, the energy numbers work. But unfortunately, we're seeing just from preliminary basis that that doesn't appear to be the case. We'll continue to make sure that's, that our information is accurate. But you've looked at 24 months of bills, I think?
Mm hmm.
Yeah.
24. Of course, what also affects your utility usage and why there won't be that many savings is that you're adding an expansion, so your square footage is increasing. So anytime you increase square footage, that eats up the savings because you're actually going to be using more energy. And so sometimes what we'll think through, not with CECO, but facing the city is that you have capital cost avoidance, you have deferred maintenance that you have. And so we can run numbers for that and what you would be saving and tackling some of these improvements now. There's also rebates that are available. There is also, it's not released yet, but the Public Utility Commission might be releasing some incentives for generation, backup generation. And so that is something that we're tracking closely.
I just wanted to pull up the list because it sounds like you're kind of getting into that anyway.
Yes, thank you. Sorry, it's a little difficult to see from here.
Sorry.
So other funding sources that I've mentioned, so CECO is one of them. For this, it would be a little bit difficult. That's typically in the, the, it comes as a loan, a low, very low interest loan. But you would have to have a project that has a payback of 10 to 15 years. And then you have the Texas Historical Commission. I know a lot of people that have experience getting funding through them. It is quite difficult, although they are said to be more than doubling their funding in this next term. But as those of you that sat in on some of the courthouse funding rounds, they have a very big log of courthouse.
The issue is again, I, I don't, I just don't see us being competitive. And I, I've been very candid with the Texas Historic Commission staff about that. Because they always encourage us, well, you should apply. And I'm like, well, I don't, you get paid on the number of applications. I'm really confused because we don't compete. It's clear that we're not competitive. The, the ones that are competitive are the actual courthouses, the ones that are being used as a courthouse today. And we aren't, we aren't in that realm and they don't have enough money to, you know, to do those projects. So we're just not going to compete. And they know that. And when I tell them that, they're like, yeah, yeah, you're right. But, but.
They're very excited about their program.
They are. They're very, yes, they're very enthusiastic.
I've always told them, Susan and Tanya, who helped manage that program, that if y'all get quadruple the amount of funding, then yes, let's all get excited about it. But until then, I think it's good.
They have more demand than they're able to fund now.
Yeah.
This is the issue. All right.
And then the other one is the Inflation Reduction Act. We don't know how some things will change with the current administration, but we do know that it is, the program cannot be ended before the end of the year. And so that is a tax incentive. So what it supports is generation. So I know solar is something that some people have been looking into. And so it is an incentive that would offset the cost about 40 to 50 to 60% of what you would pay out of pocket for doing a solar installation. So for this building, I would not recommend to put it on the rooftop just because it is a historic building. And I know we have the, the letters that were historic feature that you would want to get put back. So not the best thing here in a historic building, but even carport covering, we've done a lot of those because it gets, as you know, when you get into your car in the summer, you get burned by a seatbelt and it's nice to have something covering. So that is something that we've done before, but that would be on a by case basis if you would even like that and want to offset your usage.
When we looked at it, we, we considered that as a possibility for the annex. Maybe there'd be an opportunity when we're building the annex to, to look at ways to hide the solar portion of it.
And it even sometimes covers part of the roof because you have to have a structurally sound system in order to put solar on top of it. And so you wouldn't qualify for the highest percentage, that 60% offset, just because of your LMI. It's a, it's a good thing.
LMI means low to moderate income.
Yes.
And we don't have a very high percentage of low to moderate income in Castroville.
Yes. It's a blessing and difficult when you're applying for funding. And then the other thing that I listed here, just to diversify what, what the options is the Meadows Foundation. There are a couple of foundations like this that are a nonprofit or private entity that funds improvements. They do a lot of community things like with animal clinics, but they also have done sustainability projects. What sustainability means is things like solar or even HVAC. Anything that will save utility savings and especially in historic buildings. So they have funded, I think, two historic buildings in the past. And this is a community that has a really rich history and that is, the community is really intact with it. So that might be something that they would like to fund. And so this is a, a mix of items. A couple of other things that we've submitted for with other cities and counties in the past are the congressional funding allocations. And so usually we see a lot of success with those when the city collaborates with the county or collaborates with the school district. And there's a couple that request from your congressman. And so those are opening, there's, they stagger. So the month of March is when they all open and they're open for a few days to submit. But maybe not for this building, but just for you to know, that's another avenue, depending on your congressman.
That's how we funded our community center project.
Okay, perfect. So in addition to that, you have community facilities. I did see the USDA community facilities. And then other than that, FEMA has a grant management system portal. Even if there's not something open now, you can upload engineering drawings for generation that you want to put in different buildings. So you would go and do a study or from what you have investigated so far, put it in the portal. And as soon as a grant opens, you're able to just pull those in. That's been really helpful because as you know, sometimes grants have a very small window. And if you've already done the work in the background, it's good to apply for. So the, the good thing is that there are, there are funding sources available for the types of buildings that a city would own. Not necessarily too many for this specific building. And so typically what we advise in this scenario, especially because it's a historic building, it's something where you have office staff looking into financing options. Typically what we'll do is we'll work with your financial advisor and figure out what are some creative strategies that we can have? How can we not raise taxes and still get some financing? If we do borrow at all, how can we put that in an investment pool? Or how can we yield some kind of return while we're not touching it? Because as you know, construction doesn't happen all at once, right? You don't need to use those funds immediately. So how do you put it somewhere to be accruing some type of interest? And so those are the types of things that we're used to be doing. I'm sorry that I don't have more. I wish I could bring you a grant to cover the full project. But like I said, we're used to putting these together and our, and our team is really good at being scrappy value engineering and giving you the biggest bang for your buck. And that's all I have for now. Any questions on anything I've?
I'm going to start in the middle this time. Council, my king? Because I keep promising that I will.
Thank you. Scott, Darren, we were in a Castroville Economic Development thing six months ago. We're someone gave a presentation on low interest loans that were subsidized by the state downtown development. Houston, a couple of their building.
Right, that was from ACOG, right?
Yeah, that was ACOG.
I was not at, I'm not at that meeting because I'm at Rotary on those Thursdays now. Now going forward, I'll be able to be at them because it'll be on the fifth Thursday, the EDC meeting that is. So I, I didn't attend that one, but maybe Darren remembers.
Yeah, so, so I also serve on the board of ACOG and it was Lyle Huffstetter, Lyle Huffstetter that gave that presentation.
Your mic.
Sorry, I'm losing my voice too. Lyle Huffstetter from ACOG gave the presentation and he was talking about, it's more for private individuals. Basically the, it's the, I think it was the PACE program.
PACE, yes.
Yeah.
Private.
But that was for private individuals. And he said there might be something like that for, for municipalities, but he was not aware.
Well, I, I'm going to be very mad at myself later, but, but one of the, one of the areas I think is raising and its desirability as we look, as we kill all the other options is the USDA. I think there is a viable opportunity to get a low interest loan through the USDA for a project like this. They, they do these types of facility improvement projects. I just want to gouge my eyes out when I think about working with the USDA because it's been such a challenge. But that said, I mean, that, that with having McKinstry on board, one of the things that, that I was very heartened by in talking to your team was the fact that you all are able to manage complex projects where there might be multiple sources of funding, whether it's owner contributions or CECO grants or appropriations from, from congresspeople or what have you. You know, all of those will have different stipulations. And one of the things that, again, I felt encouraged by was the fact that you reassured me that those are the types of projects y'all do all the time and managing through those is, is normal. And so that's great because right now we're doing that on our own as staff. And it's, Jonah can tell you what a joy and how much, how pleasurable it is to do that. It's, it's, it's really been a pain.
It is quite a bit. Also with the USDA, I'm sure you know, those are sometimes a three-year process. FEMA, as, we're all used to this, those of us that have applied for grants, the amount of time. We have one FEMA grant that we just got awarded last week and we applied two years ago. So sometimes whenever we, well, when we start a project and we're applying for grants like that, we'll also include in, we'll do a calculation for what the cost of waiting does to the cost of construction or renovation and what the benefit is of the grant. And we'll show you those two paths. And if the grant is not advantageous, you get to at least make that decision, being able to compare the two apples to apples. So.
The other thing I'll tell you is I've learned this through that process with the community center. The USDA, to its credit, they are making, one of the reasons we've had such a challenge with the community center is that they were getting mixed signals from DC, from the DC office of the USDA because they're trying to, ironically, they're trying to streamline the process. They're, they really, really are trying to get, they've been given mandates by both Senate and Congress because what they're seeing is that, that they aren't getting application, applications and the money isn't getting spent. So Congress and Senate, they're, they're allocating the funds, but USDA isn't spending it. Well, why aren't they spending it? Well, as they peel back the layers and figure out, it all comes back to red tape and how much red tape there is and that kind of issue. So USDA has been going over at least a three-year process to try and overhaul their red tape process to, to minimize it. And again, for me, the extreme irony is we got caught with our FY22 appropriation and in, in, in the midst of a lot of turmoil. So, but going forward, you know, if they're true to their word, that could actually, they, they could become, go from being one of the worst agencies to partner with to be one of the best if they're really able to streamline the way that they, they seem that they want to.
I just have a few more. Yeah. So Gabriella said, I've met her, the county, Judge Luce had asked me, because I'm with the Medina County Historic Commission also. And because it was a historic courthouse, he had asked us to be involved in that. So I heard your presentation back then. Your hair changed though.
I was blonde, yes. No longer blonde.
And, but again, I understand what they're doing with this design bill. The big thing is again, if they can go out and help us get some money. But I have no problem with, with this and the fact that it would move things forward. But we're going to need the money.
We're going to take a pause here. We're going to take a five minute recess. We'll take the recess at 7:34. Great, thank you.
For those that don't need, know, there is a little bathroom right around the corner here. And the other bathroom's on the other side of the building.
Who needs the moment? Who needs the moment? We did this, this recess off. I was just like, I think we need to stand up.
You should hold the gavel. Come up here. You should hold the gavel.
What are you going to do as mayor?
I told Joe, Joe, I need to go. Thank you so much, Darren.
I appreciate it.
It was good to see you. Congratulations, man.
Need a smile.
So what is the city?
What do you guys think about the dollars?
Yeah, my son went to the Citadel, the hardest of the military practice. And he graduated two degrees. Now he's a surface warfare officer. Now he's a surface warfare officer. But good. Yeah, so. Not an easy thing, I know.
Where are you gonna walk more like your brother?